It is May 12th at 7:00 PM. This is the Town of Auburn Planning Board and we're opening the meeting. And would everybody please stand and salute the flag?
The flag of United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the meeting is being televised and recorded. Is there anyone in the audience recording? We will shut off our cell phones so we won't be disturbed. Okay, so we have... Oh, thank you. You knew I needed that, right? No, I have another one. Okay, so we have 7 o'clock discussion, 716 Southbridge Street. Applicant Michael Capers requesting a SPA waiver for a public hearing requiring to propose art studio retail sales business as defined under section 3.2.6.8 of the Auburn zoning bylaw. And are there any problems with this one?
Introduce yourself, please.
Mike Capers, just moved to Auburn last year. Could open the spot up.
Okay, so you're looking for the change from a tailor shop to an arts and crafts business and you're going to have the painting classes there.
Correct.
Okay. The Chair, Mr. Capers, was here last meeting to discuss this proposal and we had asked him to come back with a plan that showed the parking the board had asked. So that has been provided today.
Okay, does he have sufficient parking? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16? Oh yeah, 17, 18.
There's a total of 9 in the back. Count the 7 across the back parcel of the drawing. 2 near the rear of the building. A total of 9. Appears to be 11 spaces in the front. One of those vehicles is parked over a line. So I have counted 11, Mr. Idiot. I'm trying to find the 12.
Oh, you didn't mark them on the print here?
I'm trying to see it.
8, 9, 10, 11.
Do you mind helping us find the 12th one?
To square along the back of the building or whatever.
Why didn't you guys put them on the plan?
To here. To here on this aerial view. You subtract the 4.
21, I get 21. Okay, I've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. Then back here, I got 1, 2, 3.
That's not a 10.
Oh, that's a 10. Okay, so 20.
Even so, with the 20, and I know the plan doesn't reflect the 21. The minimum requirement for the building itself, given its square footage, is 18.
18, okay.
And the calculation in the bylaw would also require the number of employees on the largest shift for each business. Now, 1 person owns and operates 2 of those businesses, correct?
Yes.
And that's the barber shop and laundromat.
Yes.
To make 19. And Mr. Capers would make the 20th person to operate his business.
Can you show me, Matt, where they are?
There are 8 in that front, along the... Along Southbridge Street, there are 8.
With the red car is?
Yes, there are 8 there. I know, I know they're not lined up towards the Jersey barriers. There's a sign there, but there is 8 spots there.
The one car in 2 spots.
Which I'm gonna have that relined, so you will represent the 8.
8, 9, 10.
There's 12 up front.
There's a spot here too, right?
Yes. And it's 4 in the front of the building, there's 8 in the back, which represents a total of 12 there.
The darker red car?
There's 8 there, 4 in the front.
Yep. 8 along Southbridge Street.
Yep, 4 in the front of the building with a walkway.
Yes.
Crosshatches. And then how many in the back?
We're gonna add 9 to bring it to 21.
Okay. And where are they gonna be? Just up against the bushes in the back?
You're gonna have 7 along the back.
Yep.
And then I'm gonna have 2.
Couple down the side.
Right behind the building.
Did you have the line guy ever look at it?
I did.
And he couldn't get more? I mean, I'm all right with it, but it's...
Well, actually, I could, but...
It looks like he'd probably get more there.
With what Mr. Rother was talking about, I really didn't want to go against the Jersey barriers after the last meeting, so I just wanted to stick to what we had. But to be honest with you, I do think I could probably squeeze more in along the Jersey barriers, but I didn't want to do that.
Yeah, it was about 28 feet in between the building and the Jersey barriers.
And from the back of the building to the back wall is what?
I believe that's about 70, 70, 80 feet. There's plenty of room to back out. It meets all the requirements to...
So in other words...
Do you want to say your name for the...
In other words, he meets all the requirements as to people versus parking areas?
In my opinion, yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there anything else that he's not in compliance with?
Yeah, the right amount of handicap spaces. I believe it's 1 per 8 spaces and they're proposing 2 here total. It's under 24, so 2 spaces, 1 that's proposed and 1 that's existing. Parking is there. It's a pre-existing business, pre-existing footprint, no new increases to impervious surface. Wouldn't all 3 of the spaces in the front meet the handicap requirement where they have a 8 to 9 foot area to the side where in which you could allow for a handicap van to provide access? So I think that as well. Plus they're adding 1 in the back, or 1 or 2, 5 foot.
I don't, I don't have any... As long as he meets all the requirements and he's got a diagram of where the parking spaces are, I don't have a problem.
I have 1 additional thing through the Chair that I spoke to the Town Engineer about today. Just a recommendation to the Board, take it or leave it kind of idea. They would like to see some sort of hashing out of a... It's kinda tough for me to say. Or at least the pedestrian foot traffic, so you can connect the handicap spot from the back to the door entrance. It'd be part of striping. It's better than sidewalk. Just to keep this area blocked off, if this makes any sense.
Okay.
So that cars, traffic...
Well, you could put that down as a condition.
Right, exactly. And the engineers just thought that would be amenable to the pedestrians and especially of that parking space.
Okay, alright, so then you have to put that in, Shaun.
We'd go with a striping plan anyways.
Alright, anything else? Entertain a motion?
We'll make a motion that we approve it with conditions?
Second now.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Anybody in the audience have any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's move.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Yep. Do you want that to be like an L strip right around the building?
Yeah.
All the way?
Yes.
Just to the door of the... Well, I don't know, you've got 2 doors there. The door into the...
Right.
Place, yeah. Yeah, the laundromat and the door into the...
The Town Engineer kinda showed a full...
Okay.
It'd be like a... We can fire lane pedestrians.
Exactly. Well, I guess the only question I had is, I round the back of the building, can I keep it close to the building? So stay X amount of feet off the building?
Think about a wheelchair. You know, can it fit within those lines? That's the idea.
Probably 3, 3 and 1/2 feet.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
I'll have a letter for you gentlemen within the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day.
Okay. And we have a public hearing. Applicant SAI Communications requesting a special permit under section 4.1.5.6.1 of the Auburn's...
Try that again.
Under section 4.5.6.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to install an electric vehicle charging station.
Where's 385?
That's mall. Mall, Auburn Mall.
Oh.
We already got 1 there probably for Tesla. And they want to get on the other end of the mall. For a property located in the RM overlay zone district at 385 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass. Assessors map 33 parcel 87. Hello, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, good evening. For the record, Liz Altabelli from SAI, project manager for our, for NRG, for our customer. You guys do have the updated plans and happy day.
Can you put that up on the screen?
You want the plan?
They're way down the... It's down by the...
They have a revision on it.
Yes, it's where the road comes around the front, there's a little grass place in there and there's parking here and then you gotta go around the corner, right in that area there.
Yeah, it's actually, we chose that location opposite of the Tesla area. It was kind of minimally invasive for customers.
We don't have an electronic version of the plan.
On the side of the ramp in front of Sears.
The Teslas are used quite frequently.
Yeah, and they have quite a few there, so that's a good thing.
Good thing.
As the demand increases, so that's good.
Right here. Here's Macy's, there's the parking lot, the garage, right in there.
Miss Altabelli, just for the folks at home that are watching, could you describe the difference between using the Teslas, if any?
Sure, sure. The Tesla network and, you know, we support all, our EBCI here, so they have a proprietary network and the Tesla charging stations are superchargers that are there. I think there's 8 of them, or 6 or 8. They charge only the Tesla model car. So the benefit is the fact that the charging stations that we put in will support Tesla. They have an adapter as well, as well as the Nissans, the Kias, the Volkswagen, every car manufacturer will be able to utilize our charging station, the fast charger, because it will support 1 of the 2 plugs. They call them the SAE, which is a Level 2, and then the Chattimo, which is a fast charger. So that will charge very quickly and if you're thinking about going into a retail location like we are potentially installing, it would make most sense to have a car pull up who needs a charge. They pull in, plug in for whatever, you know, whether it's 10, 15 minutes, go in, do whatever they need to do, come back out and take their car away.
Now, how do they find these things?
They go on a national data website. So they're on PlugShare.com and then they're also listed on the Department of Energy website. So any, any, most of these drivers who are driving the electric cars at this point are very technologically savvy. So once a station goes in, it actually, a driver will know and they, they write about it and it goes automatically onto what the...
And they drive from station to station.
Exactly, exactly. Because you have to plan your route.
Yeah.
And that's exactly why we're supporting the infrastructure and trying to prevent the range anxiety. So, because these cars do have a limit. Tesla's 250 miles and a lot of the other cars are 100, 120 miles per charge, so that's why we're trying to support the infrastructure with the most avant garde, so they have the best, you know, possible options.
Now, is this, is there a charge for this?
So the mall has worked out with NRG, our customer. It's going to be an amenity to the mall. They feel as if they're offering, you know, a service. And then there will be, as demand increases, there will be a convenience fee, because just like anyone goes to fill out a gas station, they're gonna wanna, you know, they'll be willing to pay for a charge as well. So it just depends on the time that they're there.
Now, why does, why do all these need to come to plan? Was there revision to the landscaping or site plan?
They required parking for, for the mall.
Okay.
So it's...
Still parking space though, right?
A reduc... Yeah, it's still, it's still a space.
It's the same procedure we did for the Tesla.
For Tesla.
And the regional mall, Lowly District, explains this pretty clearly, all that a special permit. So this might be something for the bylaw review committee to review as well, the zoning...
Any questions?
That's great.
So what's needed from us, Matt?
I actually have a question, just for the folks at home again.
Sure.
The underground conduit, let's see, that comes either across the ramp for the garage, eventually makes its way to the center of the building. So it's gonna need some construction hours to...
So we can comply with all construction hours and we'll work with the mall. We've done a number, a number of these. So a lot of the trenching work could be done at night as to not, you know, impact any customer traffic, so for sure. And we work with the Auburn Mall tenant rules and regulations prior to the pre-construction meeting, so we, we definitely abide by all that, or we would not be able to make it happen.
Have they seen our things? The ones we've gone through?
The standard?
Yeah.
We have adopted them formally.
Oh, okay.
So you mentioned night construction?
Well, if that's what the mall requires, some of the mall, and this is a Simon mall, so they have their, you know, their tenant rules and regulations and they do require certain work to be done, you know, on off-hours. If that's required by them, then we will comply with that and do it, so, you know, at, at night. But I'm not sure that, they didn't say anything at this point.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a residential area, especially on that side of the mall.
But they have an exception for that.
We have a normal construction hour policy, which is typically during the daytime, but the rest of the block, no problem.
I have no problem with it.
Even that.
And what we do is we comply and kind of hash out with a chain link construction fence and all the equipment is kept in very tight, so it's, you know, very safe. And I mean, we have to, clearly the mall has their guidelines as well, so we, we're used to the stringent, kind of the tight work area, for sure.
How many discharge units are you gonna install?
So there's going to be a fast charger, which is a Nissan DC direct current fast charger, and then there's going to be a Level 2 charger. So there's gonna go 2, 2 charging stations. And if you look on the plans, that's the proposed...
How many square feet of space are you thinking of?
3 parking spaces will be allocated for electric vehicle charging.
Oh.
So it's the 3 space, so 9 times... Is that, what are they in length?
20. And that's for the cars to back into to get charged.
Exactly. So there'll be 1 sitting on a pedestal, which is a Level 2, and the cord will pull out and they can, the car will pull in here and they can use a Level 2. And another car can pull in and use the DC, the fast charger as well. And then we have, we'd like to propose a future charging station for the future, but we're not proposing that at this point.
Another charging station at the mall?
Future, yeah.
In the future?
Yeah, so we're, we're only talking about 2 at this point, which is depicted on the, on the plan, yeah. The proposed.
It's negligent.
Yeah, so at this point, the demand is, because the cars are increasing and there's not, you know, millions of them on the road at this point, we feel that this will support the infrastructure just fine. We won't need that 3rd one at this point. Potentially down the road, we might come back and ask to zone a 3rd one. Like Tesla did, they planned for 6. They, they looked way, way into the future.
Yeah.
Which is great, because it pays the way for all of us.
There's always 2 or 3.
Yeah, they, and I've seen a lot of cars.
A lot of cars.
Surprised.
Sometimes, 3 or 4 times, I didn't think they'd made that many Teslas.
That's a...
Doing very well.
That's a pretty successful franchise.
Elon Musk.
Cool to see.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I'd like a motion. Nobody in the audience wants to have any questions? Okay, entertain a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd make a motion to, entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the applicant's request with conditions.
Okay, with conditions, okay. And second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any, any other questions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? No? Good, now...
The only thing is, if you...
Hours of construction.
Okay. Would you like me to just confirm what those would be with you, or is there something I had to comply with?
We're gonna tell you what they are.
Okay.
The conditions. And then if you have to do it at night, you would call Matt, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Get permission.
You can talk to the code enforcement or somebody, just so that we know that it's a variation.
Sure.
Through the Chair, if it's alright with the group, if you're able to come up with some hours in between now and our next meeting, I can add them to the language decision prior to you signing.
Okay.
Yeah, you could find out from the mall what their stipulations are and relate those to Matt and that could be put into the wording of the special permit.
Okay.
Our standards are 8 AM to 4:30, Monday through Friday, Saturday 8 to 12, and no work Sundays and holidays.
Okay, so no work Saturdays and Sundays?
No work Sundays and holidays.
You work Saturdays.
Saturdays are 8 to 12.
8 to 12. 8, is it 8?
Yep.
8 to 12.
But given this is commercially zoned, or presence nearby, I'd be curious to...
Okay, so as long as, if these, if this is what we need to comply with, that will, we will comply with those, with those hours. So Saturday between 8 and 12, Monday through Friday between 8 and 4:30. And then Sunday and holidays, no work.
Correct.
Okay.
How long does it take you to put 1 of these in?
Uh, well, once we get the permit, we'll have a pre-construction meeting and we look at an average of like a 3-week time span from putting up the fence to installing, to trenching and painting and completing the job. So 3 business weeks. Yeah, it's pretty quick. It's a short-term cycle. It's, yeah, it's, it's quick.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Yep.
So, do I just get back with you on, do I need a letter of...
I'm gonna put the letter together.
Okay.
Once it is ready, the Board will sign it at their next meeting and then we'll stamp it in with the Town Clerk.
Okay.
Appeal period and then...
Okay, the next meeting is the 26th visit?
Yes, let's just put the pen to paper, it's not something you have to attend to.
Okay, so am I allowed, can I move to building permit at this point, or...
They will likely wait to sign off on an occupancy permit until this has passed its appeal period.
Okay, perfect.
But you can begin applying for permits.
We'll put, we'll put everything together, okay. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good luck.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Here you are, and welcome homes. Requesting a special permit to continue for Earthville under section 9.6 of the Auburn zoning bylaws. Earthfilling at Elmwood Street, Grier, Gibson Road, Auburn, Mass. 12 parcel 20. Introduce yourself, please, for the bodies at home. A motion to reopen this. Need a motion to reopen this?
Need a motion to reopen.
Second? Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Peter Hager with Welcome Homes and Pat Burke, HSMT Group. And the main reason why we're here tonight is to just give you guys an update and see what we've come up with over the last few months. We've been working with my engineer and the Town Engineer, Bill Coyle and Joanna. Trying to come up with the best plan we have here and so we have some materials for you and an updated plan. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the call now, the volume. Okay. Patrick Burke from HSMT, civil engineer. We've been working with the Town Engineer staff with their recommendations for what we're gonna do with the hill and back of the homes here. Originally, they wanted us to have underground surface detention time. We attempted to put together quote-unquote high walls in the back to avoid creating a structure across the property lanes. What we came up with was about 7 roads across the power lots here. It was still very difficult to gain access to a surface detention basin. We attempted to come up with Gibson Road, with about a 10, 11 foot slope. We also attempted to get access to potential base of High Ridge Road. It requires about a 10, 12 foot wide access around the perimeter of the whole detention basin. We weren't able to achieve that. We met with the engineer and staff, told them what we would like to do with subsurface, which is the storm scepter chambers. We're also working with the earth to design and tweak the existing drainage we're showing here. What we'd like to do, collect the drainage on Gibson Road and a series of catch basins and manholes, also put in a stormwater quality treatment to collect the floatables and sediment coming off of Gibson Road, direct that into the subsurface chambers along the square blue line here. We'll also be collecting from Gibson Road and the homes back along a grass swale here, showing the blue that ties into the homeless street lots. There's an existing swale here currently getting asphalt on that, so that will collect additional runoff, put it in the storm scepter system also, and discharge along High Ridge Road around here.
Now, those houses, Gibson Road?
Yes.
Is the one that banks down and where it's all filled and all the trees were cut and laying there?
Yes.
Going down to High Ridge that Mr. Rother was concerned about the stones going down?
Yeah, yeah.
And you're gonna put those, what's the size of those?
We're sizing them right now. We think they're gonna be, the arc is about 2 feet high. They'll be subsurface, buried about 2 feet deep into the hill under the proposed grading.
Because you've got such a slope there now.
They'll be underground, so there'll be a 2 to 1 slope down.
So they're, so they're about, what's the width? There's 1 lower one, it looks like.
51 inches.
I don't, this, this is swale here and this will be a flat field. We may step it down.
And where are the units gonna be?
The unit's gonna be along here.
Underneath, and how big are they?
They're gonna be about 2 feet high, arc, maybe the whole system.
Yeah.
It's about 300 or 400 feet long by about 20 feet wide, but we're also tweaking that right now. They're not, it's a preliminary design right now. This will get smaller. In that StormTech brochure right there, if you look into the chamber, there's like dimensions on the chamber, is that what you meant? Yep. It's similar to what they make, we have that for the rooftop for them.
Just like an infiltrator that Bill Coyle asked us to put for, to collect the gutter, you know, runoff, runoff. It's a similar concept, it's just a little bigger than that.
So if this swale is at 460 all the way across and you're 2 feet below 462, so you're 460 for the tank. How is the, how is the slope that's gonna accept the runoff from this side getting into that?
It's beneath, it's beneath the ground. It's beneath the swale.
Okay, so you're...
And then the chambers are...
So it's gonna be beneath the corridors?
Yes.
Tiered in? Alright. Through the Chair, I'm sorry I stepped up for a moment, you mentioned speaking with Bill last week, Town Engineer.
Oh, yeah.
And probably...
Yeah, just kind of basically, we've been meeting with him several times, actually, and we had the engineer from StormTech to come to that meeting with Pat and Bill, and they had, you know, kinda come to a consensus that this was the best plan. Now they're at the point where they're just sizing out the exact chamber that we think we'll use, and, you know, we're gonna do a couple of test pits tomorrow, Bill wanted to just observe some modeling, so we have that scheduled for tomorrow morning, just to kinda confirm before we bring the final plans to you guys next time. Yeah, the test pits tomorrow will be determined if we can, where groundwater is out there, get, maintain the bottom of the system two feet above groundwater, so infiltrate under the ground without coming out of the top of the system.
Well, saying nobody's a, an expert on hydrology on this plan of your wood, I think that we would need the town engineer here so that we could ask the correct questions.
Yes.
Or we'd need a peer review for someone to study it.
Yes, they are, they are.
Cause I, I have a problem with the town engineer designing their project. We, our guy shouldn't be spending his time doing a project.
He's not designing the project.
Did you design this and then run it by him?
And we had a review.
Yeah, they, they designed it.
I thought you said maybe that he was designing it.
Oh, no, no. We designed everything and then we handed it off to him for review.
I would want a total okay on drainage for that area by our town engineer, and also a total okay from the town engineer that that bankin' wasn't gonna move, okay? I would have to have both of those before I'd consider even going any further with this thing.
Through the chair, I think that's the intention.
Yeah, that's, that's another final plan, yeah. Yeah, we've been working on them for a couple of months now. Yeah, we've continued several times.
Well, just to let you, just to let you know how one of the people feels.
Right.
About it. I'm sure the owners feel something about that. Any questions from the audience? No? Yes?
Um, I just have a couple of questions, just kinda where you guys are right now. Have you solved the existing drainage issues on the two lots over here?
Yes, so the swale is 100% in on 88 and 86.
Okay.
The grading has been completed and we're doing the as-built. Oh, that, yeah, that's, he's on the other end.
He's on this end, right?
Right, right. But actually, since, once the ground thawed and we were able to complete the swale, actually I haven't had, and I'm not sure if the board has any, but I haven't had any feedback negative since all the snow and everything like that, since the swale has been in. So we completed the construction of that about a week ago or so, and we're waiting for HS&amp;T Group just to go out there. I think they're gonna be out there tomorrow, the next day, to give us the as-built, the certified as-built, that that's built the way the plan was designed.
Okay.
But it is in place, it's done, we're just waiting for the...
What have you done in the bank? Have you taken all the stump soap, you've done all of that?
I haven't touched any, we haven't done any construction on Gibson Road at all. What our, our intent was to...
Just, you're talking about the two houses?
Right, 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 yes.
The one that dropped off.
Right, cause we have an approved plan for 88 and 86 Elmwood, and that's what we've done so far. We've done nothing else on Gibson yet.
Is it, is it still part of the plan for you to upgrade Gibson Road and widen that road?
Yep, yep.
And that drainage is factored into the StormScepter sizing?
Right, yes.
And are you putting a fence anywhere along the back here, cause it's gonna be a pretty big grade?
Well, there, there's actually...
Well, when we do the, when we, we can make a condition when we approve them.
I'm just curious.
Well, we, we originally were gonna, we had a lot of revisions with walls.
Right.
So, there are no walls anymore needed, except for on lot 7, on the last lot there. So we'll have like a flat backyard, probably 30 feet or so, and then it'll be a, is it a two-to-one or a three-to-one slope?
Yep.
Yeah, so two-to-one the rest of the way down to High Ridge, so if you'd like to condition a fence, that's fine, but we don't need it for the wall, you know, height or anything like that, for safety.
All those driveways on those two houses you've cut up already, on an icy day, I noticed you got a wooden thing at the end of one, I don't know that that wooden thing would stop the car on a sheet of ice, cause that's the way my driveway gets on, when we get one of these ice storms.
Well, that, that, those, 88 is, probably 88 is the one that you're talking about, is 88 Elmwood, so that already has the occupancy permit on that, so that one's already pretty much done. The driveway on 86 is significantly less than 88. House is a little bit closer to the, to the road, and the grade is a little easier. The steepest driveway we have is probably on 88, and the driveways all on Gibson are flat, straight end, no, no drive unders or anything.
So this is going to come back to us?
Through the chair, I think it was very thoughtful for the applicant to come in and provide an update for the group. I think it was very, very professional of them to do so. As they continue to work with the town engineer and they had, last meeting was on the 6th, right, last week, Wednesday, and Mr. Burke apparently rushed to get us at least this plan within a few hours after that meeting, which is very, very good, so give our, give the board an update. So, you mentioned your meeting with the engineer within the next couple of days.
Twenty-sixth?
Or even next week or so, and, but...
When are they gonna come back to us? Twenty-sixth, or...
I mean, it's up to the board if they wanna push us to the next meeting and if the applicant's in agreement, and if you'd like to go through it.
Well, we wanna make sure when they do come back that... Everything's ready. They don't have to keep coming back.
Sure, right. That's, that's the intent of this, was, we, I thought Mr. Coyle could make it tonight, but obviously he couldn't, but, you know, we, I know Matt's been working with him, or hearing back and forth from him, but we've been working with him for like three months now, so we think we have what we need, and the things, like you're saying, I think we will get his blessing once we get the final calculations on which chamber to use.
That's what we're looking for.
Right, right, yep, yep, absolutely.
You think that'll be done by the 26th?
We do, yes.
Alright, so you wanna come back on the 26th?
That is our plan, yes.
Is this gonna be a peer review and...
Yeah, Joanna Packman and Bill are both reviewing the drainage. We've gone over...
What was that?
Outside peer review.
Not like an outside engineer, no. Just, I think the, the plan was...
I think you meant outside.
Yeah, and then like, that's up to the board.
Whatever.
It's up to the board.
Well, let's see what Bill says.
The deadline for submission for materials for the 26th meeting is May 20th, that is eight days from today, seven days from tomorrow.
Yep.
And that'll be by 3 o'clock.
That's Wednesday, right?
Yeah, we have to have like two or three.
So you not only updated plans, but response from the town engineer too, could be aggressive?
Well, that's the plan, so hopefully we have, so he's been, we have some test holes with him tomorrow, so the engineer from StormTech has been working quickly with Pat to address any concerns there, so hopefully we'll be ready for that, that's our goal at the moment.
With the rest of the board, but you think it's worth it for them just to take the extra two weeks, have it be done and ready? Rather than potentially ask for an extension?
Yeah.
You mean to, in June?
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to come back and be ready, the only exception to that being that I won't, Bill will give his recommendation on whether or not we need a peer review, so hopefully this is any more, get that going.
Can you ask Bill if he thinks he can, and if he can, put him on for the 26th? Cause that's what you guys want?
Through the chair, if you'd like to put them on for the 26th, if they're not ready, they can still request that continuance, come on the next meeting anyways.
Well...
We're not up against the clock for a deadline now, special permit or anything.
Alright, so, you wanna do that? This is, this is just a discussion?
This is just a discussion, this is just about the...
Oh, it's a public here, but, uh, yeah, this is just an update for us, that's all. So we need a motion.
Wanted to make sure we were able to address, kind of, cause we switched gears several times now, wanted to make sure if anyone, you know, from the town came, you know, they had any questions or anything on where we stand.
Okay, will you, want me to make a motion to continue it till the 26th?
I think I need you to sign a millennial thing, because you missed a hearing for this, so I would make that one, make it to these two.
I'll make a motion that we can...
You missed one in March.
I don't think so, but that's alright, I don't care.
I'll make a motion that we continue till the 26th.
I'll second it on Gibson.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? Aye.
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 So, May 20th, Wednesday at 3:00 PM.
I was here for two or three meetings, okay, but this was going on, and, and I might've missed one meeting exactly, which, by the way... You can look at it on TV. I will look at that and sign it, and I wanna be in.
Absolutely, that's, that's where I left to go check, I wanted to make sure we were okay there.
Not a problem. Okay, so, we'll see you then, and hopefully we'll have everything all said, if not...
If, if Bill isn't ready, then we'll continue.
I have a form, I guess.
What do you do?
This says, yes, you know. Alright, thanks, I have a...
Oh, shit.
I think that's really hard to get. I got it.
You worked.
Okay. So...
Uh, 26th, that's fine.
Okay, so applicant David Pappas requests a continuance.
Thank you.
A continuance to the 26th?
Yep.
Through the chair, there was a meeting with the town engineer staff today, to go over a 30-plus comment sheet the town engineer submitted on April 23rd.
For that one?
And they went over some of those line items, and they expect to make revisions shortly.
Okay.
Looking to continue to the next hearing.
Okay, that was a long list, I did see that.
Yes.
You know, when these applicants come in, they, it's great that we got Bill and his staff to review it on our behalf without having to pay, but they shouldn't have any obligation of feeling to, you know, I mean, if you're sitting right here and you say to a guy, "Hey, if you move that over there and put five feet of dirt, it'll work," that's okay, but for him to spend town time designing or telling them what they ought to do, I don't believe, I don't think so.
I still think it's, I agree, I, I know exactly what you mean, I don't think that's exactly how this...
Yeah, no, he said, he said it, he...
But I agree with you.
Yeah, they must be coming in with their plan.
But when he first came, the way he said it, I thought it was like, "Oh, wow, holy cow."
The history on that one, I really like Bill's feedback on that.
Yeah, and if we don't...
And I was there during that.
Yes, you were there for the first couple, anyway, that's right.
And if Bill fills that we need, that we need further, or would rather have us get it from an outsider, then we can do that.
Tough property.
It's a compromised site, so if anyone to get anything there, they have to go maybe some extra over.
I've been over at that site several, myself.
Yeah.
Both on Gibson Road and High Ridge. Have you?
I drive by it all the time, so, way back in daycare.
Yeah, that's amazing, I, I look at that little wood fence on that piece of property there, I wouldn't want my car going down that driveway on some of the days we've had.
There's not much you can do.
Somebody's driving, you see what they're occupancy permits.
I know, I don't, they cut the occupancy permit. Okay, so...
So do you need a motion to continue Pappas?
Yes.
To make a motion to continue it to 5/26?
Second.
Okay, it's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that's a vote. Next we have is JL Land and Development LLC for a definitive subdivision plan continued, known as Windmill Estates, for 12 lot subdivision on 5095 Prospect Street. They request a continuance to the 26th.
Motion to continue it to 26th.
Second.
Okay, motion is made to continue and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's gone.
Is that still Max's property?
Yep. Okay, so we are now down to applicant VNG 310 Washington Street LLC requesting a site plan approval, continue. They request to withdraw without prejudice by applicant on 5-6-15.
Through the chair, the board asked me to send them a letter.
Yep.
And they came back with a response asking to withdraw within a couple of days.
Okay.
The council for the applicant...
Larry Broder.
Yes, Mr. Broder, stated that there was too much indifference between the owner and the manager, uh, the property manager.
Property, okay.
So they respectfully would like to withdraw and try to visit this at another time.
What's the without prejudice?
So that they would have the ability to submit it later?
And not have a waiting period?
That's right. Okay.
Normally it's a two-year...
That's fine with me.
Okay, so...
It's a two-year hold unless they do that.
You will make that motion, Mr. Brooks?
I'll make a motion that we approve the applicant's request.
To withdraw?
To withdraw without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's a vote.
We'll hold the queues for that one.
Yeah, I, I can't hold on.
Cause to come the night they came, as I've said a bunch of times, which has had to have been five or six months ago, at least, or longer, and thought that they were all ready and had it right, but couldn't answer a lot of the questions.
Half the questions.
And then continued for six months, and then, oh, we'll back out.
Okay. Signatures, 848 Southbridge, yes, sir.
Okay, I should come for a discussion, it's probably all we really wanted at that point, not if we were ready for it.
Yeah.
Sir, I have a signature for the special permit, we voted on the last meeting. John was absent, so I just need the three of you to sign this one, and I will gather Wendy's signature at a different time.
Today's date is...
12.
12, 20, 15. He's got his own thing. He comes prepared.
That's right.
Okay, so signatures is done. Member discussion, standard conditions.
Yeah, that's our list that we're working on, I sent this out to the DCG group.
Yep, okay.
I had gotten one response thus far.
Okay.
But I would respectfully ask the group if a lot, a little more time to get feedback from the rest of the staff, if any, but most of the, three folks said that this was a great list.
Okay.
And appreciate the thought and work going into it.
Okay. Alright, so, recommendation to town manager for PB alternate members.
So, in speaking with a select board member about trying to get these alternates appointed, and I've spoken with you folks in the past as well, this alternate member under Mass General Law would only be permitted to vote on special permits, as the planning board serves as a special permit granting authority in some instances.
And it would only be required to attend when there was a special permit coming up?
Yes.
So this isn't the same type of alternate member as the zoning board, yes?
It is, because they're a special permit granting authority, that's all they do.
Right, but they have alternate members that fill in on all of whatever they're doing.
Right, cause all they do are, are special permits and variances.
Variances.
Since we have subdivisions and site plans, they would need to be...
We only are the authority on certain ones.
That's right, multiple business use.
But to do it as a whole planning board, cause we had, somebody I thought had looked up the law and found that it was not allowed under Massachusetts general law.
I haven't found that, per se, I did...
There's something, because they said that we had alternate members with the zoning board for the last 60 years.
Right.
And they've asked for it, for the planning board or whatever, but it just never...
Yeah, but they weren't legal for the, for the ZB area.
Right, they weren't, and they weren't even legal.
Right, until recent times.
You know, this is the 21st century, why can't, when I'm in Florida, okay, why can't I attend the meeting on my iPad?
I know, right? It should come to that at some point.
You know how to use it? Then do you have one?
So anyway, what, what would be the... You'd have to dress up hard, too. What would, yes, what would be the situation with that? Who would, who would have the answer to that? That's a good thing for you to look into.
Certainly, that's a, that'd be a landmark discussion.
Well, it would be a landmark thing to do, I mean, corporate does this all the time.
Content use, oh, yeah.
I mean, this is no big, this is no big deal.
We do it at teleconference and get scotched on the TV.
Conference call, audio conference.
When we were, when we were looking for the new town manager, we did it over...
That would negate the...
There was a guy from New Jersey, we did on the video.
Alternate, I mean, basically it would.
Okay.
Would the board like to make a recommendation as a group to...
Look into it?
To the town manager, to advertise to appoint an alternate member?
Yeah, but can, can they do it now without...
We've, we've found language under Mass General Law, so we can cite that in our recommendation.
Okay.
And if they find a flaw in it with town council...
Okay.
So be it.
Alright, well, why don't we do that? Sound like a plan?
I don't have a problem with that.
Do we need to vote on it?
Feel like to make a recommendation citing MGL section nine, uh, chapter 48, section nine.
Okay, so, who's gonna make the motion?
Jonathan can make that.
I'll make a motion, as you said.
That was an easy way to go.
I'll second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll prepare that letter.
I mean, we know you don't do anything up there, so we gotta give you something to do.
Tell me that were true.
Well, you can pass it off to your assistant.
He's got plenty to do, as you can see.
Okay, so next we have minutes of April twenty-eighth. Okay. Any questions? Any changes for those minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of...
April twenty-eighth.
April twenty-eighth.
There a second?
Second.
Has a motion made and seconded. We accept the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, correspondence. Letters to Marcos Rosa. Site plan approval waiver for eight forty-four, eight forty-eight Southbridge Street. Letter to VNG Washington Street LLC. Excessive continuances. Well, that's taken care of.
Yep, letters are just up there. I said if anyone had any corrections to make.
What was the one to Rosa?
That was for his site plan approval waiver.
And where was that?
Yeah, it's in here.
No, but where's eight...
Was that forty-four?
Oh, that's the special permit that we, that we did last meeting.
Was that the car place?
Yes, it was.
The car, he's, he's gonna put in a paint booth that that, you know, the guy down there?
Across McDonald's down on, down on...
On the extension.
With a top by the back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
So part of his application was a request for a waiver site plan approval, and I made a draft of that.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Happily make that motion.
Is there a second?
Yes, yes.
There's a second. Motion's made and seconded. We adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we don't need anything else.
Opposed to adjourn.